Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday evening, 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 17th, 2009. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting documentation for tonight's meeting in the little plastic bins on the wall next to the door where you came in. So help yourself to that information. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28, and this meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 28 Friday at noon, if you'd like to revisit this meeting. And we're also streaming live on our website, www.townofyountville.com. Just click on the Town Council tab, and you can follow along live or watch this meeting at a later date. I would also respectfully request that any of you with cell phones and pagers, if you could please turn them off while you're in council chambers this evening, we would appreciate that. May we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Mueller.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Sauserman.
Here. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We did meet in -- oh, we did not have a closed session on November 3rd, so I take it there's no reportable action. Do we?
That's correct.
Do we announce the closed session that we had earlier?
Nope. That'll be --
Next time.
You're concluding that yet tonight.
Item five, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None that motion carries. Item six is public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address any matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Now is your opportunity. Yes, ma'am?
Ma'am, Mayor of the Council, just several of us have almost killed pedestrians in the crosswalks at either end of Hurles in the last couple of weeks, when it's getting darker earlier and our tourists are appropriately dressed in basic black. But it's very scary. The lights seem to be out. Maybe it's part of the new lighting system, but it's always been a bit treacherous to try to cross those crosswalks. Anyhow, there are some dark crosswalks, and several friends also have said they were lucky, and they apologize to the people that they slammed their brakes on. But it's hard at both sides of Hurles. It's really tough in the dark when people are dressed in dark colors. So whatever, if you have any ideas before -- And I was sober, and they were sober. You know, I -- Any ideas that you have would be wonderful, before somebody gets hurt. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
If I could, I will provide a little information. Unfortunately, that area is part of the current Midtown pedestrian project, and replacement streetlights are a part of that project, and we are hopeful that that will add some additional illumination to those areas. Our staff is aware of that.
And we don't have any light there?
Well, the project is replacing a few lights. So there are, right now, there are a few lights that had to come out in order for that, and new lights are going back in.
Okay. When do we anticipate those lights will be in?
Project needs to be completed by the 24th, but the lights are following there. We are working on some potential interim solutions, but the light standards are on order, and that's something we will press the contractor with.
Okay. Thank you.
Part of the issue that I will point out, though, is that the existing light patterns are on one side of the street only in that area, and the current project is only replacing on the one side of the street where the existing lights and access to the electric was. So that may be something we need to further look on, our long-range streetlight replacement program.
Okay. Anyone else? Public comment. Anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Anyone? Okay, seeing no further comment, I'll close public comment and move on to item seven, approval of tonight's consent calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None that motion carries. Item eight, presentations. Presentation by Napa County Commission on Aging. Do we have a introduction?
Hello, Mayor Sauserman, council members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. My name is Naomi Dreskin Anderson. I'm representing the Napa County Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging reports directly to the Board of Supervisors when there are issues of concern affecting our elders. In 2001, one of our guest speakers was Gar Harry, consultant for the District Attorney's Office and a retired captain of the Sheriff's Department. He spoke to the Commission about the rapidly increasing cases of elder abuse in our community, financial abuse, mental and physical abuse. Shortly after, at another meeting, we heard from Deputy District Attorney Gary Van Camp about an elderly woman of significant means who died after being left alone in her recliner. She was physically unable to lift herself out of the chair and was totally dependent on her caregiver. Her caregiver decided he needed a week of R and R. When she was found, she and her surroundings were in horrendous condition. Her caregiver was arrested. He appeared before an out-of-county judge. He was given no jail time nor any type of punishment. Not only did he walk away free, but he inherited his victim's estate. In response to hearing this information, the Commission formed an ad hoc committee to raise the consciousness of our community. We sponsored several seminars, warning people of the dangers of hiring caregivers without giving some sort of background check first. But we felt more had to be done. Unlike the protections that have been established over many years by our state legislators on behalf of other vulnerable groups, such as children, battered wives, and animals, such laws protecting the elderly and disabled are sadly lacking. Since the state has dragged its feet in this regard, we knew we had to work on confronting the problem in our own county and cities. We recently received unanimous approval from the Board of Supervisors to begin visiting the cities within the county to seek your support and endorsement of a multi-jurisdictional effort, which we're going to describe to you. You might be interested to know that there are several other counties watching to see how we do here in Napa and are ready to follow suit. A few that we know of are Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, Marin, and Mendocino. This evening, we'll be making our presentation on why we believe it's vital to have city and county ordinance in place to ensure the safety and security of our seniors and persons with disabilities, who must rely on others to remain independent as possible in their own homes. Calistoga was the first city we met with, and the city has given its approval to join this endeavor. This council, in considering working with us, will take a significant step in extending critical protections to the citizens you serve. I'm very proud to introduce Napa County District Attorney Gary Lieberstein, who is a tremendous supporter of Napa County seniors and a major participant in the development of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gary Lieberstein. I'm District Attorney of Napa County. I'm also joined by investigator Jane Henshaw of my office, who's in our domestic, she's in our elder abuse unit, and also by Terry Razzelli Dietz was also, is also here with the area on aging. Before I go into the PowerPoint, I want to just give you a little bit of background and kind of dovetail on what Naomi just told you about a little bit of history. She mentioned back to 2001. We were aware that elder abuse was a growing problem in our community, as well as across the state and country, and pretty much where child abuse was about 20 years ago, you know, vastly underreported. And if you think about the people we're trying to protect, that's a very vulnerable population. You know, our parents, our grandparents, come from a generation that was a handshake generation and a generation of trust. Your word was your bond. And so if someone's at their door and wants to talk to them, they're going to open the door. If someone calls on the phone, they're generally going to answer the phone. And now with our new electronic age of the internet, if someone's contacting them and they've learned the ways of the internet, they're going to respond. And when people ask questions, oftentimes, they're going to answer, because among other things, besides being trusting, often they're also lonely. They're taken advantage of not only by strangers, but many times by their own family members. And so what we recognized back in 2001, 2002, is that there was a serious lack of coordination in our communities. I would hear stories of people would say, "Well, I reported it to law enforcement, but law enforcement wouldn't do anything." And law enforcement would say, "Well, we reported it to the DA, and the DA wouldn't do anything." And so we formed a couple of things. We started an elder abuse unit in my office. We have a full-time investigator and a full-time prosecutor. Michael Mountner's our prosecutor. We started meetings of what we call the Elder Abuse Prevention Council. It's a bi-monthly meeting that I chair, and we have stakeholders from law enforcement, from adult protective services, from ombudsmen, from other agencies, caregivers. And what we found in the early meetings were basically people would look at each other and wait, "Who are you? And I'm supposed to report to you, and I'm supposed to cross-report to you?" And there's a lot of misunderstanding. For example, a lot of people don't understand that, you know, the ombudsman's job is to take complaints on skilled nursing homes. It's adult protective services' job from the county to take complaints from private homes, and they don't have the ability to go into the home without cause or reason to believe that the elder is in serious danger. So we started having these meetings, and we developed a countywide protocol for reporting, investigation, prosecution of elder abuse, and dependent adult care. When we talk a dependent adult, we're talking age 18 to 65, a person who's not able to care for themselves and, you know, needs help in food, shelter, and clothing. An elder, by definition, under the law, is 65 or older. What I can tell you, since we started the protocol, which has been signed on by every law enforcement agency, by the area on aging, by the ombudsmen, by adult protective services, and I believe we took it to all the councils, including this council, what we've noticed since we started having our meetings and sharing information and cross-reporting, and we started our unit, well, we've seen complaints and prosecutions ultimately doubled and tripled, and in some cases, quadrupled. We're up to about six cases a month that we review. It's not to say that elder abuse has suddenly quadrupled, but it's the fact that the awareness and understanding has grown. We still have many situations where people are afraid to report. Often, it's someone that they care about or have learned to care for, and often, it's a stranger who has now isolated the elder from their family and from people that care and are emptying their bank accounts and many other things. And one thing we know is often by the time we catch what's going on in financial elder abuse, it's often too late, because a life savings has often been destroyed, and it's, as you can imagine, very hard to gain restitution in that situation. And as Ms. Dreskin Smith pointed out, the area of caregivers is one of great concern, because if you think about it, we license taxi drivers, we license massage therapists, but we don't have a background check or license for many people who come into our homes or our parents' homes and are there while they sleep. And this was made very aware to me several years ago, when my father was in the last days of his life, but we had home health care. And I would leave the house at 9:00 or 10:00 at night, and there's a stranger in the home, and my parents are going to bed, and I'm thinking, "I don't have a clue who this person is." And I'm the district attorney. And it was a very sobering thought. So with the help of many people, and we've been working on this for a couple of years with the Board of Supervisors, and there are many questions that were raised and concerns, liability and other things, and we've gotten to a point now where we have a draft ordinance, which is in the package that you have, where we've had multiple presentations, the Board of Supervisors culminating in a couple of months ago in September, when we met with them and got unanimous approval to continue forward. And the charge was, you know, it's wonderful to have a countywide ordinance, but if we don't have the cities on board with their own ordinances where most of the people live, then we're only going halfway. I'm in a very interesting position tonight, because I'm not here to ask for your money. I'm not here to ask a great deal of your time. What we're here to do is go through the reasons for the ordinance and where we are, and ultimately, hopefully, to walk out of here with an awareness and your consent to have your staff and town attorney work with county staff and try to essentially mirror the ordinances that are being adopted by other cities, as well as the county. And we're targeting, hopefully, by maybe June, of rolling this out. And this is prevention, first and foremost. When we were in Calistoga, Mayor Jingles asked me, "Well, don't we already have laws on the books, and don't we have protection for elders, and why do we need more big government?" And I said, "Mayor, that's a good question." And the answer is, that's suppression. That's prosecutors in my office prosecuting and punishing people, holding them accountable for what they've already done. We want to stop it before it starts, and that's what we're here about. So if we can go through the presentation, and I'll give you the caveat that Jane normally presents a large part of this, but she, about an hour ago, is suddenly filled with, not emotion, but she's coming down with a serious cold, so she asked me to jump in. So forgive me, sometimes I stumble most when someone puts words in front of me. But basically, as Ms. Dreskin Smith indicated, this was started by a county commission on aging, and initially started as a fingerprinting initiative, and we moved forward from there. We can go through these first couple pretty quickly. Is it best if I just kind of do the justice?
That would be great.
Okay. So basically, we, there was one we skipped over, but the basic reason we need backgrounds, and it's another sort of scary area. We were hearing in the last several years that the number-one growing industry across the country for parolees leaving prison was home health care, because some of them, even being told by their parole officers, were, "Nobody's checking who you are. You don't have to talk about the fact that you just got out of prison, and you can get a job." And if you can think about it, you know, many of these people were casing our homes from the inside. And what we're talking about is full disclosure. And as we're going to point out, if somebody, knowing someone's background, still wants to hire them, there's a way of doing that. But at least they know who they're letting into their home or who they're letting into their parents' homes. So we're looking at this as both a deterrent and obviously a prevention tool. So this is the process itself. They're going to apply for a permit. There's a coordinator in the process. The licensing is being done graciously, going to be handled by John Tudor with his clerk hat on. We have a background specialist that will review the application. If they fail the background, and Jane, maybe you can help me a little bit on that, is that, are there automatic disqualifiers?
There's disqualifying kinds.
Okay. So we've shown you that. There's certain crimes that there's no way they're getting a permit, because this is a twofold. It's a background, and that leads to giving them an official permit to be a caregiver. And so if they're disqualified, then they can appeal the background specialist. And there is this limited permit, and that's the area I was talking about. If, you know, if somebody wants, knowingly wants to hire Bubba, who just got out from 30 years in prison, Bubba can get a, he can get a limited permit for that one person who's given their consent, but he can't go out and take care of 10 or 20 people. It's that one person only. If they pass, then that approval letter goes to the county for the permit, and that person has to reapply annually. And as we'll talk about later, the fee for application goes down on reapplication because of renewal, because of course, there's not as much of a background. And again, this just clarifies, if they fail the background check, they can work for one elder or dependent adult. And the idea is that person is informed of their background check, and then they can choose to authorize that person by signing a notarized declaration. And this also applies, if someone wants to hire a family member, you know, they're still going to have to go through this process, and we're still going to inform them, because not everybody knows where some of their family members have been, quite frankly. And, you know, they're very trusting. So again, who is included here? We're talking about people that aren't currently screened, RNs, LVNs, people who would be hired through a care providing agency. So if they're not otherwise licensed, as we'll see if they're licensed already, they've been through this process, people on their own. There's a lot of people that put advertisements, you know, Craigslist or the newspaper or something, saying, "We need someone to take care of our mom." And people just show up, and they, you know, they want to jump right in and do it. And, you know, we're going to say, "You can't jump right in." And this will also apply to relatives who are providing personal domestic service for consideration or compensation. And again, the people that aren't included are people who are already, have to get fingerprinted for a license or for certification. So we're talking people who are already under in-home support services, registered nurses, physical therapists, certified home health aides, and workers in licensed care facilities. The question as far as liability came up, you know, will the city or the county get sued? And we've worked through the application process, and there's, the applicant has to give indemnity in the process. Again, can we stop everybody from being victimized? No. Can we reduce it? Absolutely. And we hope in an extremely significant way, both by the application process itself, as well as the fact that people know they have to apply. You know, if you think about, and this hasn't been a greatly adopted procedure, but if retailers would consider having somebody use an inkless thumbprint pad when they write a check, we could resolve a lot more of those cases, because many times, someone takes an identification, they make a note, they check the ID, and that's all we have. And six months later, or three months later, they're asked, "Do you recognize the person you took this from?" Of course, they don't. The answer many times is, "Well, I don't want to upset my good customers." Well, if they're a good customer, you don't have to take their fingerprint. But if you don't know who they are, the people that are most likely going to be upset are the people that you want to prevent from writing that check in the first place. So it's the same analogy. If somebody says, you know, "How dare you make me go through this process," well, fine, you can go to somewhere else where they're not protecting their elders in the same way. But some of those people are the very people that you're trying to stop. And there are horror stories we won't go into here from other jurisdictions, as well as our own, where some horrible things have happened, life savings drained, people seriously assaulted by people using aliases who just got out of prison for identity theft, for elder abuse, for serious assaults, domestic violence. So that's what we're trying to prevent. And as far as who's paying the cost, it's borne by the applicant, and as well as some grant funding and cost sharing, but it's not going to cost the county or the city anything. The actual cost, the first time applicant is paying $90. That renewal dropped to $79 the first time, and 67 after that. The area agency on, the area --
The agency on aging.
Agency on aging. Say that 10 times. They're the coordinators of this, in terms of the application process. Then there's a permit fee for $20 that's paid to the county clerk, and that helps subsidize their fees. The coordinator's costs, we're estimating about $50,000. The fees from the applicants estimate will cover about $10,000 of that. There's some cost sharing, another $19,000. So we're looking at startup, about $20,000. And our projection is, once we get through startup, that this will be self-generating, that we won't need to continue to fund it. So in terms of how we're going to fund that, well, you can read that part, but actually, one of the things I've offered is, we have a consumer fraud trust fund that we build from penalties from cases that we've resolved, and I can't think of a better way to tap that fund than to help protect seniors. So I've offered to cover up to $10,000 of the upfront fees out of our trust fund, and the balance of the $10, we're hoping to get through some type of matching grants to our funding by Gasser and other grant agencies. But we're very confident that we can raise that money without going into city or county funds.
Okay. Gary, just really quick, Gasser did, after a letter of intent, come back to the area and do anything in this group and ask us to submit an application. So we made it through the first round.
Okay. So for those of you tuning in around the world, we already have the matching $10,000 commitment based on an application request by Gasser Foundation, so we --
They sent that proposal, but we have made it through the first round.
We made it through the first round, and we're confident that we're going to be able to raise this money. These are some of the concerns, I guess, that were raised, that, you know, you can drive people out of the caregiving business, and again, as I pointed out, the people we want to drive out of the business are people who have no business being in there in the first place. Some of the agencies already fingerprint that this is going to recognize that. We're not going to make people go through backgrounds that have already been through that. You know, the cost for businesses will, you know, this is, I'm not sure I understand that one. You know, the bottom line is, we're trying to level the playing field, and nobody should feel threatened by this. I mean, what we're trying to do is, you know, in the old phrase, build a better mousetrap and essentially not have to worry about what happens down the road, because we're, you know, we're guarding the road. And so the bottom line, to sum up, is that, as it says, what we're asking you to do is to help us support a program that benefits everybody. It's not a perfect solution, but we feel we've addressed many of the concerns that people have. And as I told you, what the next step we'd ask from you, and I guess what I ask in this whole area, what I look toward, is that the generation that raised us, I believe, is entitled to our protection and the dignity of living their life out in their late years without having to worry about people fleecing them. This is something we can prevent, and it's something that we believe that this ordinance will go a long way toward preventing. So we would, we're happy to answer questions, myself and my team, but we're hoping to, you've had a chance to look through the packets, and we're hoping for your approval tonight to authorize your staff to coordinate with the county staff. And I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer questions.
I'm in the awkward spot of clarifying one of the district attorney's comments. You can't take action tonight as it was scheduled as a presentation, but you can provide consensus direction for staff to bring it back as an agenda item.
Yes.
I appreciate the clarification. If I misled, you know, that's exactly what we're asking for, and then once staff works forward with the ordinance, then it comes back for first reading and, of course, final reading.
Yeah. Understand and appreciate it. Thank you, Gary. Does council have any questions for District Attorney? Councilmember Chilton?
First of all, Mr. Lieberstein, thank you very much. This is, I think this certainly applies in our town as much as any town jurisdiction is valid because of the demographics of our population. So I certainly support this, and I don't doubt that my fellow council members will in the end as well. You know, the only question I had when reading through the proposed ordinance had to do, the only thing that kind of felt a little odd to me was the relatives provisions. And I'm sure you could probably give me maybe more stories of relatives who did this than strangers. But I guess my question has to do with the fact of what constitutes consideration or compensation? You know, you've got your son or your daughter living in your house, and theoretically, you're providing them free rent. Is that consideration? And they have to get a permit to take care of their own parents?
I would believe that would be accurate, yes. And, you know, the idea, again, is we assume that the family member who's going to have them caring for them knows who they are, knows their background. And some of the worst offenders are family members. And what this will do, the process will document that person in that relationship, having been through the background. If they have a criminal background, then we're going to have a documented waiver on file that they know that, and they're moving forward. And if, after all that, that person still empties out the life savings, you know, there's a built-in track record of not just fair warning, but the fact that this person knew going in what the process was about and violated that process. And it, you know, it's not just going to be a minor transaction. I mean, we're going to have a record of open disclosure, and that person knowing that they had to go through the process and still, you know, their inherent makeup was they couldn't help themselves.
Right.
So I think that's a thought process. But, yeah, it doesn't have to be money changing hands, certainly room and board and all that play into it. And, you know, in many situations, we have family members take over checking accounts, they become the co-signer, you know, they're writing checks themselves for $20,000 for things for themselves, or their boyfriend or girlfriend, or drugs, or whatever it happens to be. So it's, I understand some people may have an issue with that, but again, when you look at the bottom line, they can still employ that person. It's just that we need to have a legal record that they're in that relationship.
Yeah, I think that's my ultimate question is, I can see that if you're, you know, not a family member and you're, you know, a known identity thief, that that person should be excluded, really. be excluded really in almost all situations. But, you know, if, if you're a parent to your child, as long as you're knowingly making a waiver, that you do have the right to say, "You know what? I know everything they've done in the past, and I don't care." Then you're making at least an informed decision.
Exactly. And that's the limited license provision.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I have, I have at least a couple of questions here. Can you tell me a little, I mean, I think the package did an excellent, well, first I'd just like to say I strongly support, you know, protecting elders and our dependent adults like we have, you know, a lot of other protected classes. And I'd like to really, you know, commend the Commission on Aging for all their efforts. I'm sure this has taken a while to talk through and things like that. So I'd like to thank everyone involved. I saw a lot in here about the documenting process and getting the blue form and paying your fees and everything, but what I couldn't find that maybe you can give me a lot more detail on is what would be the, the strategy and the funding and the management for effectively enforcing this ordinance?
It would be, as in most ordinances, and I'm not, you know, I'll defer to your town attorney for a moment, but on a county ordinance, any violation of a county ordinance is a misdemeanor under the code. I'm, I believe that's similar on, on, on town ordinances, but I'm not certain.
Well, that's not really my question. Maybe I can rephrase it. So it seems to me like, you know, I'll use the example of daycare centers. They get licenses and people go around, I'm assuming from the county, maybe the cities put license them, I don't know the details, and inspect them periodically, write reports, check on all that kind of stuff. So what's your strategy for really enforcing this, to really go in and making sure that Louis has his permit when he's taking care of his, his parents? I mean, what's your strategy and the management and the funding to, to do all that to enforce the ordinance?
Let me phone a friend for a moment. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's similar, I mean, adult protective services certainly, if it's, if it's in the home. Law enforcement, I mean, we're going to have to rely on, on, you know, if something's going wrong, somehow it's got to be discovered or, or there's got to be a complaint made or something. I guess what I was starting to refer to you was the enforcement side of it. If, if we learn that someone is giving in home services and doesn't have a license, A, they're violating the ordinance, B, they're also, we, we would consider that in my office an unfair business practice, which can be civilly or criminally enjoined. You know, in terms of, well, we have people, you know, walking in the home every other day to check to make sure that the person who's licensed to take care of that person is, is doing that, I, I think obviously government can only do so much. Certainly, as in now, we learn about elder abuse from everything from, you know, a caregiver may, may let us know. Sometimes it's the mail carrier, you know, who's used to knocking on the door and someone answering, they're not answering. Sometimes it's a dog barking all the time, and you find out that, you know, this was a case we actually, that I had heard about where a person had taken over the care of this elder woman, and her little dog had, and I think it was her son, actually, her little dog had always slept in her bedroom at night. And he basically told his mother that until she signed the house over to him, the dog was sleeping outside. And a neighbor noticed that the dog was barking for like 30 days straight and, and had never noticed that before. And, and when they checked, they went to the house and they heard a voice from the back, and, you know, she was bedridden, and she explained what had happened. So I mean, you know, there's no red light that's going to go off, obviously, that someone's going to instantly see, but there are many checks and balances that we, we try to rely on.
So if I know the person next door is a caregiver who doesn't have a license and I call the police, they'll come over and check it out? It's pretty much the mechanism.
If you call law enforcement, you can, I mean, we have a consumer hotline, we have, you know, Jane's, you know, Elder Abuse Unit. I mean, we, we work very closely with law enforcement, and there's times when we assume original jurisdiction as well because law enforcement may not have the, the time or the resources to put the same priorities as we do. But between law enforcement, our office, ombudsman, and APS, I mean, we would make sure that, you know, we would eat, we would know about it. And there are, there are methods to immediately go in. We've just, through our, our prevention council, one of the offshoots is, is developing what's called a FAST team, which is a, basically a strike team of experts that when a case is reported, it's very confidential, but when a case is reported, there's a very quick way to go in and seize assets and freeze bank accounts and so, you know, to try to stop the damage when it's found. So I mean, that's another sort of enforcement tool once things are reported.
Okay. So my other question, it says in here, I think you mentioned here that the state of California, which is considering putting something in place, has, is preferring the fingerprint method, and I see some of the other agencies do that as well. So my question has to do with the, because I know social security numbers are a really big deal. There's a lot of ways to steal those things, and that's going to be your primary mechanism for putting this in place. But, and there are a lot of specific rules that have been put in place by the Federal Privacy Protection Act of '74 protecting social security numbers. So if an applicant for his license refuses to give a social security number claiming a right to privacy under this federal law, what are you going to do then?
I, I'm going to just check with Jane. I think I know the answer, but...
Oops.
Yeah. So, so the social security number is not the only basis for doing a background check. I mean, clearly, it's, it's very helpful to have that. If someone does legitimately not disclose that, you know, you still look at driver's license, you still look at date of birth. I mean, there's other ways to do background check. And we don't think it's an automatic disqualifier if they refuse to give their social security. You know, one might say if someone is asked by a government agency filling out an application for a social security permit and they don't give it, I mean, for their social security number, that, that might raise a red flag. But there are other ways to check background. So it's not solely based on social, or there's no, you know, there's no way to do the background.
Yeah, I just didn't see that in there. Okay. Thanks.
Certainly.
Any more questions?
Well, I was just going to, again, thank Mr. Lieberstein for coming tonight, but also, yeah, I, I think it's sort of a win-win deal. In other words, for the real, and probably in the majority of the excellent caregivers, it's just going to give them more credibility as a check. And then it's also going to weed out the ones that you don't want in there. So I support this fully. I think it's very good.
Thank you, councilmember.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. I was at first concerned, and Councilmember Chilton brought the issue with how this impacts the family member who's trying to just care for his or her parents. And I guess we were probably both looking at this from the standpoint of certainly they're going to be, they have the, the best intentions, and you, you have to unfortunately respond to the worst intentions. And so that's why it's, I can understand it's necessary, and it's not really an undue burden, I don't think, to have that guarantee in place that even family members are going to be checked and, and asked for, for, you know, for them to go through this process. The one question I have, just if there are impacts on insurance coverage, and I say that very broadly, both for, if, for example, you are a permitted caregiver, are there impacts on your ability to be insured if that is the situation? And also for, for somebody who's receiving medical equipment for their home care or medicines, that type of thing, is there a benefit, either maybe like a rate reduction possibility if you can prove that you have this certified home care, that you've kind of stepped that care up a notch, so the insurance coverage you're under might recognize that level of excellence? Is there any possibility there, or is that, is that not really an option?
I don't have the instant answer, but I'm going to use a Lifeline. It's, it's not actually an issue that's come up, and I'm, and we're happy to, we're happy to look into that. As far as the home health equipment and whatnot, most of those folks are going to be RNs or LVNs, so they're going to be exempt from this process at any rate.
I was just thinking, it's, maybe it's a bad analogy, but it may still be a parallel, like a, a discount you get for either, you know, being a non-smoker or being a good driver, those types of things where you've been proactive in, in creating a more, a higher quality situation. If there might be an opportunity for people that are obviously going to be challenged with their medical coverage in some cases, there, this might be an additional qualifier that they can get some kind of, some relief. Just to throw that idea out there for discussion.
Okay. Well, we'll...
All the great, we love it.
So we'll, we'll definitely follow up.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Gary. It's certainly a worthwhile cause, and we will, I believe you have the consensus of the council to, to place an ordinance, a draft ordinance on the next agenda.
Well, to have staff, to work with staff to, to that point, yes. Thank you.
June? Okay.
What was that?
Well, we're saying, we, we're hoping to have the entire process, all the ordinances drafted and everything in place by, by June. We'll, we'll want to work with you on a much more ready, reliable schedule so we can, I mean, after we've gone through with all the councils, we'll be back to the Board of Supervisors to report on our, on our time with the councils. And then, you know, we're happy to come back on your first reading and answer public questions and whatnot.
That's what I meant.
At this point, I need to point out, we cannot, based on our current calendaring, we're not able to process on a, on a December 1st. Staff will need a bit more time...
No, that's not what I meant. I'm sorry.
...to work on it. And also, we would need to make sure we've got some input from you all as to questions or concerns. We would need to sit down and, and get a copy of the draft, and I need to understand a little bit more about the funding structure because there is one in there that always gets my attention, which is cost sharing and, and potential contribution from our agency that's in there. And I want to find out a little bit more about that and the structure. So I guess what I would ask for is, is there consensus from the council that you'd like us to work, find out a little bit more, and then within a reasonable time period, bring the item back for more discussion and vetting by the council?
So what do you mean by finding out a little bit more? I mean, I don't, I'm not really clear on what we're agreeing to or not agreeing to or what's...
Well, when I say that, it's, first of all, the, the draft ordinance has to be rewritten. I need to find out the licensing provision. There needs to be language in there, for example, that would talk about the town authorizing or permitting the county to be the enforcement agency, some little nuances that aren't, but I mean, none of that's a big obstacle. The, the real question that I'm asking for, is this something that the council wants to authorize staff to put on our work plan and devote resources? And then, you know, once we've figured out some of those, had some meetings, figured out a draft, we would bring it back at a regular council meeting where you would have a regular item, you would, you know, hear from people, you, just like you would other processes, if there's issues you like, don't like, you know, whatever the, the council's concerns are then would be addressed, and it would proceed as per council direction.
So this would be totally separate and independent from the draft ordinance in that we were shown here? We could have significant changes or inputs or adopt it all? I mean, that's what you're talking about?
Well, I can't say that for sure because I don't know, one, what the council's comments and concerns are. For example, there would be certain elements, I'm going to presume from the county's administration of the program, that the county is going to say, "If you're turning this over to us, we need this to stay in this format if we're going to do it." So I, I don't want to put myself in a situation where I can speak on either side because at this point, this has not been something staff's working on. I think the process is there, if that's something, and more importantly, without knowing the council's concerns, it's hard to have a conversation with the county staff talking about how to address those.
So how do you go about getting questions from the public and some of our input and what we'd like to see or change or add some...
Well, again, I'm going to, if you ask that this moves forward, the council will put it on a regular agenda. And just like you do on every other thing, people will come and share with us their ideas. And it may take two or three opportunities before we're ready for first reading, if that's the council's prerogative. Or it may be that after some discussion, you know, this community is well-known for sharing, so if there's some input and, and we can get some information from people, then I can certainly provide that when we bring a staff report back that talks about issues and concerns, like we do in our normal staff reports. And then there would be a draft. Like I say, the, the format in here has to be tweaked some because it's easy for the county to say, "We're going to do it, and here's the structure." But we do have to put in a parallel relationship and make sure we understand that. Not insurmountable. We've done that on a number of other relationships with the county. Animal licensing comes to mind and a few others. So there's clearly an opportunity to cooperatively work. And again, I would need, you know, better input from the council and the public as to what their concerns may or may not be. I also want to make sure I understand the financial implications of any arrangement going forward.
Well, I think this council's interested in pursuing, looking at a local ordinance regarding this issue. So, I mean, it doesn't have to be in the immediate future, no, but we should start discussions at some point.
I mean, that's the consensus I'm looking for from the council.
Yes, I would agree.
If that's the case, we bring it back. And again, much like I keep telling you all, when we provide a first draft, that does not mean that you have to accept it in that format. If there's things you want to change...
That's right. We understand.
We change it, then we bring it back for first reading.
Okay. Good.
We'll look forward to working together. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, we have a public hearing, master development plan amendment.
Mayor, I will have to recuse myself since my residence is within 500 feet of this particular project.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, Councilmember Dutton is stepping down from the dais on this matter. Are there any other conflicts? Disclosures? I did have a brief conversation with the property owner manager this afternoon. Actually, it wasn't initially about this subject, but we did end up talking about it very briefly, so I will disclose that fact. Do we have a staff report?
Last month, the applicant brought forth a request to amend the master development plan for the Yountville Inn expansion and affordable housing project, and it included a request to raise the farmhouse and rebuild it in place. And when it be, when it was brought before the council on October 6th, issues as to whether the farmhouse were considered historically significant were raised, and the council continued that meeting in order to allow Napa County Landmarks an opportunity to review the project and provide its recommendations. And the issue of whether the farmhouse is historically significant is really the crux of the matter before you tonight. What we know about the farmhouse is that it was constructed in 1860 and that it's been modified and added on to over time. The farmhouse is of vernacular style, and it's plain and ordinary by architectural standards. There's some indication that the farmhouse was moved from a location near the cemetery to the present location, but much of the information we have is somewhat not authenticated, and we don't really know. We know that the farmhouse is not included in the town's historic resource inventory that was prepared in 1978 by Napa County Landmarks. And it includes art, structures that are architecturally and historically significant. It includes 41 properties, and it's important to note that many of the properties noted are the simple, small frame cottages and farmhouses that are common to Yountville. Some are even described as vernacular farmhouses. An initial study was conducted on the significance of the farmhouse and the impacts to it as part of the town's flood wall project. And there's a comment in that document that the site lacks architectural significance and integrity to its period of active use as a farmhouse, and that was circa 1900-ish. These documents and information were incorporated into the initial study that was conducted for the Yountville Inn expansion project. And the vernacular style was incorporated into the affordable housing buildings on site with the farmhouse being noted for its charm and its, and that it served as a focal point, but it was not deemed historic in that document. Landmarks findings are that the farmhouse is not architecturally significant, but it, that it may be historically significant based on the association of William Gibbs to that structure. And they did not come to a conclusion as what, to whether that threshold had been met, and recommend that an architectural historian evaluate the structure to come to that conclusion. They also recommended that the building could be saved and restored, and that it did have some significant structural issues, but that these could be addressed, that if it were demolished, that as-built drawings should be prepared and documented, that building materials should be salvaged, and that a replica structure should not be built in case, in its place. And it provided an option to offer the farmhouse to someone who may want to move it from the property and restore it. What we know about Gibbs is that he was a prominent businessman and property owner in town. property owner in town and that he owned the land that the veterans' home was later built on, selling that land to the veterans' home. He also owned property that's listed in the inventory as the Gibbs Building and that's the site of Bouchon Bistro. He purchased the property from Rosenger and built the structure shortly thereafter. It was noted as being significant both for its architecture and for its economic association with Gibbs. He also owned property that's listed in the inventory and known as the Castle Inn and informally as the Gibbs Residence. It's the site of Bistro Jean T. And it burned and was destroyed sometime after the inventory was conducted. It was listed as being significant both for its architecture and for the exploration and settlement connection to town and to William Gibbs. So, the question before you is whether Gibbs' association with Yountville and specifically the farmhouse merits the historically significant designation. And tonight, you can make the determination that it is significant, that it's not historically significant, or we could determine there's more information needed and you could direct staff to retain a historian to evaluate these issues. The issue of historical significance isn't important from a CEQA perspective because CEQA provides a two-part test for determining if there is a significant impact to a historic resource. The first prong is whether that resource is historically significant and a resource can be significant if it generally meets the criteria for being listed on the California Register. And one of those categories is a structure is associated with the lives of persons that are important in our past. The second prong in that determination is whether the project would cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a resource and they specifically include demolition as a significant impact. They also provide that destruction, relocation, or alteration can be significant if they materially impair the characteristic that makes the property significant. A subsequent negative declaration will be required if the property is determined to be significant because that would potentially involve new and significant environmental effects that weren't analyzed in the original initial study and negative declaration. The focus of your discussion tonight is on item 9A as items 9B and C are requested to be pulled from the agenda and they are really, will be the consequence of tonight's decision on how to proceed. The applicant is present tonight to explain its request to raise and rebuild the farmhouse and the reasons for coming to that conclusion.
Thank you. Sandra, could you repeat the two criteria for evaluating its, is it historical significance?
No, it's whether, it's a two-part test for determining if there's a significant impact to a historic resource. And the first is determining whether it is a historic resource and the second is determining if the project will cause a substantial change in the significance of that resource.
And I understand that...
And demolition was one of, demolition is considered as substantial change, but...
Also relocating?
Relocating could be considered significant. That may depend on knowing more about the structure and whether it was already moved from a location. So, whether that factor holds a lot of weight or not.
Okay.
So, that perhaps goes to needing to know more information.
Okay. Any, council have any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Chilton?
I was going to, just to follow up because Sandra, I'm sorry. I guess the question, this question of whether it's a historic, you know, there's these two-part question. The first one seems like a complicated question to answer. Is it a historic resource? I mean, is there, they talked about criteria that the California Register would have. I mean, is there more detail behind that? I don't feel like I have the capability to make that determination.
In the CEQA guidelines, it's listed specifically that it is a structure that is associated with the lives of persons important in our past. And I think that's a determination made on a local level. It could have been something included in the local inventory as already having been decided, but it could have been missed and that determination can still be made.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
So, I'm going to stay on this subject because everyone else is talking about it too. So, can, hey, take what you said and just kind of back up a step. So, in 2006, correct me if I'm wrong, CEQA was done, but these parts were not thoroughly investigated and therefore, no, if they're found to be true, no appropriate mitigation was done?
Well, the town was reliant on the documents it had at the time.
Why are we going through CEQA again? I mean, maybe go, step back and tell me...
Because at the time, the documents were prepared, the farmhouse was not deemed to be historic and that was based on the historic resources inventory that identified structures and sites. It was based on the initial study and negative declaration for the flood wall and the fact that it wasn't architecturally significant and it had lost its context of place perhaps. And so, those were the facts and the information that staff looked at. Of course, at that time, preservation of the farmhouse was being proposed. So, the level of inquiry wasn't as deep as it would be now if, or as it is now that they're asking to demolish it and its significance has been raised. There were several historic components raised by landmarks about the landowner and how he is important to town and that could make it significant.
Okay, that helps a lot. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yes, it does help, but not a lot for me because this, I have to believe, I'm not the only person that's still confused by the situation. We're talking about a couple of different things here, I think. The structure itself and its historic or nonhistoric significance, the structure. And it has been determined that the structure solely as a building has not been deemed significant by the landmarks because it's not part of the registry. Is that fair to say?
No, not based on the registry.
I'm just asking questions of staff right now. Thank you.
A resource can be considered historically significant because it has architectural significance and that's the building and its level of detail and ornateness or simplicity. Or, it can be significant based on historical associations to people and places and the shell of the building essentially becomes connected with the importance of the lives that were conducted.
Right, and I understand that, but that's why I'm trying to make the distinction, if it's appropriate, that the building itself, if I understood your report, had been determined that there were, there was no significant architectural elements to the building itself. That's all I'm talking about right now is the building. So, the historic value would come with who owned the building, who lived in the building, and the association of the people or person, the Gibbs connection of that building. That part has no connection necessarily with what the building looked like or its current condition.
Correct.
It could have been a shack, it could have been a castle, but now we're talking about the second part, which is the significance of the family connection.
Yes.
So, those are two and to qualify as historically significant, it does not need to meet both those requirements. It could be either of those requirements.
That's correct.
Okay. And there has not been any licensed historian that has made an evaluation of this farmhouse to date. Is that true? So, the applicant has not hired somebody to do that. I know we've heard testimony in the past about architects and developers of the project that have said, this is not significant, it's in disrepair, it's better off if we tear it down and start over. But, no true historian has given opinion on that.
That's correct because staff usually directs an applicant to have that work done and if it's a nationally listed property or one that's been identified, that's information we want to know. It was not having any information on this that didn't spur that effort.
And one of the main reasons we don't have that information is because when we originally agreed on the expansion of the Yountville Inn, the intent by the applicant was to retain it. So, it was either the applicant or staff that felt that it was not necessary because...
Correct.
Why double check if they weren't going to, they were already saying they were going to renovate the building, so it didn't matter if it was registered historic or not. Okay. But, that still hasn't happened. We've heard a fairly ambiguous report from Napa County Landmarks, but we have not had any official identification if the structure itself has any historic value. So, we're relying solely on the connection to the Gibbs family and our determination is going to be, do we deem that of enough historic significance to require the retention of the building? Is that fair?
That and perhaps other local history. There may be more information we don't know.
About, about what? More information about what? This building?
About the building, right?
So, you're saying...
Right now, all we know is Gibbs.
Because without a historian's review, we don't know what we don't know.
Exactly.
That's what you're saying. Okay. I think I've got it, for now. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to address some of the issues that we're going to deal with tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Joan Torassa. I'm the manager representing the Yountville Inn, the developer for the project. And this application and the original submittal actually included two separate elements. The first one involves the workforce housing units that we requested to remove from the farmhouse over to building two of the workforce housing complex. And then, the second being the redevelopment of the farmhouse structure as we've been speaking of so far this evening. It appears that the primary concern here tonight is the future of the farmhouse. And what I would like to respectfully ask is that if council does not feel able to approve the application as proposed this evening, we would like it to be separated into two, two separate considerations. And if we could proceed with moving the housing units into the workforce housing building. Whether the farmhouse is restored or newly rebuilt would not affect the movement of these two units out of the farmhouse. We have Jim Jeffries here, the project architect, and Pat Abernathy, the construction, project manager and construction expert here tonight, who can address any of the details.
Thank you. Can I get a clarification that we don't have any ordinances here or any resolutions here, so we really can't act on removing...
No, and again, in this case, you would be providing direction to staff to bring back at a December 1st meeting. But, it also may be prudent for you to have the applicant expand upon the basis for the request because I didn't quite really hear that in their presentation.
Okay. Can the applicant's architect or whomever address those issues?
Hello, I'm James Jeffrey, the project architect. And the reason is being, is because inclement weather is coming and we'd like to, right now, those two structures are exposed. And it doesn't seem to be any significant issues with staff or council at this time to relocate those two buildings. And it doesn't ultimately affect what we do with the farmhouse. We can either, what we're adding to the farmhouse is a community center, a laundry room, an office, and a meeting area. And those areas can be put in the structure as it's currently designed or within the footprint of the existing farmhouse. So, we're asking that those be separated so that we can continue with destruction, construction on those, on that particular building.
Maybe I need to be more specific. I understand that part. What I haven't heard the applicant present is the basis for the request to differ from the approved development agreement that requested the preservation of the existing farmhouse. Perhaps they can explain the basis for why they're making that request at this point in time.
That's part of my little spiel here. I'll move on.
Town attorney, you have a comment?
I don't think it's necessarily related. The separation of the issues is that they are making a request regarding the affordable housing units. It has nothing to do with whether the farmhouse is preserved.
Correct.
And so, if Steve's asking for an explanation of why they want to move those two out of the farmhouse regardless of whether it stays or goes, that's, I think, the question that they're looking for. Why do they want to move those two units?
Does that make sense? I mean...
Well, I mean, I guess that's the question that, that the town manager is posing is why move the two units?
Did I explain that? The reason why we want to...
And then, the second why will lead into what we're talking about, which is the farmhouse issue itself.
Correct.
Mayor, if I may, before you go ahead and get into the farmhouse issue, if I could ask staff, by changing the approved reuse of the farmhouse, meaning the configuration that included the two apartments, does that, in essence, change the development agreement?
We would amend the development agreement. We would adopt an ordinance amending it to reflect whatever is the ultimate configuration of the affordable units and possibly the fate of the farmhouse as well because both are addressed and they could be addressed separately, but it would require an amendment to the DA.
And that would need to be conditioned on what would be a newly approved floor plan of the either demolished and rebuilt or the preserved farmhouse. That would still need to be reached. We still will need to see approved plans that you would draw with the two units gone, is what I'm saying.
Correct. I mean, if ultimately, if, if the two units are relocated and the interior of the farmhouse, whether it's a new one or an old one, is reconfigured without those two units, then that's what you would be approving when you approve an amendment to the DA and to the master development plan.
Well, isn't there, I mean, I think with, tell me if I'm wrong. It seems like the request is, it sounds like that the farmhouse issue is going to go on for some period of time, which is possible, is to split and you could actually make two changes to development agreement, which I think you're saying.
Sure.
The first one is, let's not hold up affordable housing. If there's an agreement by the council that's fine to move it, that does not affect the second question.
Well, I think...
It does affect what happens in that building.
I think there's a couple of things to frame it.
Because I don't, I think that the question is, we don't want to, I would agree, this is a personal opinion, to slow down the affordable housing piece and really put it into spring possibly.
And what I was trying to say is that whether the building remains and it's a footprint that it is right now, or we demolish it and rebuild it, it, the same elements are going to go in that building.
And that would be what we would need to footnote in the proposed, would be making sure that the 25 units of affordable housing are providing and the understanding of what remaining would need to go into the, for lack of a better word, farmhouse structure and the other embodiments. But, that's, I mean, that's why we, what comes back to you would indicate that the farmhouse, in whatever configuration it ultimately does, would have to have X number of units of size. And Bob can refresh us as to the current plan, but they were still maintaining some housing units, but some ancillary use. And instead of having three units, the farmhouse would have, if I, if my recall's correct, and there have been many planned variations, so don't hold me to it. I believe that it's a multi-unit, multi-bedroom unit and then the office, laundry and various things are what is currently being proposed for the farmhouse with two of the original three units being moved into the other existing buildings that are currently under construction.
Is everyone clear on that? Okay. And you were going to address the issue of the farmhouse itself?
Yeah. Staff had asked, what has changed since the original use permits submittal and why we wanted to raise the farmhouse now? And we didn't request that prior to now. And I'll admit that our request is purely from a practical standpoint. When the farmhouse structural elements were exposed, we discovered the wall framing was not plumb. There are no headers over doors or windows, floor joists are undersized. Roof framing requires substantial upgrade. Fire damage was discovered in the existing kitchen and there's severe water damage in various locations. Both VERTEC engineering and Yi Yang have suggested, Yi Yang is one of the landmarks committee members, both engineers have suggested that almost all the building's structural elements need upgrading, replacement, and/or reinforcement to save the building. What this means essentially is that to salvage the building, we'll need to design a new structure within the structure. Furthermore, restoration of the building would need to comply with all local codes. Without historical registry, it may make this difficult, if not impossible, to pass codes such as Title 24's energy compliance. You talked a little bit about history earlier and I was going to, my understanding may be a little different than what I've heard here tonight, but my understanding was that this building was examined by a local historian back in 1978 and again, for the state of California by United Research Group. When the flood wall along Hopper Creek was being proposed, each review led to the same conclusion. This was not historical or architecturally significant. And I may be wrong in that and my understanding now that Sandra's may have clarified that a little bit different. But, it is however, an admirable... But, but it is, however, an admirable depiction of a farmhouse vernacular, which is the reason the owner originally agreed to make the farmhouse an architectural centerpiece for the workforce housing development. It is only due to the extent of the required structural upgrades and the fact that the building was never been considered for historical registry at local, state, or federal level that we make the request to replace the building. Should the replacement of the structure become an option, the existing structure will be dismantled and salvageable materials not used in the reconstruction will be diverted from landfill and salvaged through Urban or Salvage Company in Berkeley to allow the continued use of these materials. Pat Abernathy's gonna talk a little bit more about what's involved structurally and the cost of such items. Thanks for your time.
Hello, my name is Pat Abernathy. I'm the project manager for the Yountville Inn slash workforce housing project. Well, I wrote a bunch of notes here, and Jim basically spelled it all out in front of me. So really what it comes down to is the cost difference between raising the building and remodeling the building. And I've budgeted a number of items in this project where the cost savings would occur, but we probably could save that time by just referring to what I think we would save by raising the building. I think there's at least $175,000 to $225,000 that the owner could save by doing that, if you consider all of the work that's associated with remodeling. There is an adage about contractors when they bid remodel work, and that is, figure what a remodel's gonna cost and then double it. Well, with this structure, the structure's in just terrible shape. There's not, there's not a square room, there's not a plum wall. The, the structure is way underbuilt. And, and just as Jim referred to, you would literally have to build a house within a house. And it just adds, in my opinion, an additional financial burden to the owner. So that's really about all I really have to say about the cost associated with this project. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the applicant's side that needs to speak to this issue this evening? Your architect made reference to a report in 1978. Do we have that report?
That's the inventory.
That's the historic resources inventory that lists the 41 properties in town. And it's the reference staff uses for evaluating significance in many instances. The other is the URG report for the flood wall. And that, that was a limited review of the structure, but it was limited to an evaluation for eligibility for inclusion on the national register, which is a, a higher set of standards than a local or state standard would be. And it wasn't evaluated for, in terms of changes or modifications of that building, but the, the effects a flood wall would have on that building.
Okay. Before I open up the public hearing on this matter, I do want to mention the fact that we did receive comments from some of the public, one of them being an email from Mr. Henfling in supporting the retaining of the, of the historical building. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter this evening?
We're the representative of Napa County Landmarks, Mary Ellen Boyett and Stephen Cuddy. We are the co-chairs of the Preservation Action Committee.
Mary Ellen, could you pull the microphone down?
Yeah, okay, is that better?
Yes.
And I sympathize with your struggling a little bit about the historical significance. First of all, I'd like to say that the HRI, the Historic Resources Inventory, was, was done in 1978. There was a limited amount of money and people to do this survey. It is no, by no means all-inclusive. There are many, many historical proj, uh, historical buildings in the county that were not included. And I question whether any real historian looked at this property at that time, because I think they did sort of a, an overview, a survey, to see what things were worth investigating more. And, and some of those were done, and there were others that probably never crossed anyone's radar. So whether it's in the HRI or not does not tell you anything about how historic it was. You do have our report, and it's been very well described here. Not all old buildings need to be saved. Many of them can be saved, but they don't need to be necessarily. And if a building is old, it is appropriate to study whether it has any historic merit for us today. I can see that you're struggling with how you decide historical significance. And to make these decisions easier, there are criteria that have been developed for evaluating the historic significance of a property. The National Register of Historic Property, Historic Places has developed criteria that are not only used for evaluating properties on the National Register, which of course we're not proposing here, but they are also widely used by other agencies, including the state of California and the county of Napa. There are four criteria, and I think Ms. Smith referred to that. And a property need only qualify for one of the four to be considered historically significant. The prop, the first one is the property is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. The second one is the property is associated with the lives of persons significant in our past. The third one is it embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction, or represents the work of a master, or possesses high artistic values, or represents a significant and distinguishable entity whose components may lack individual distinction. And the last one is that the property has yielded, or may be likely to yield, information important in history or prehistoric. Only one of those is required to indicate historic significance. And if this house was the home of William Gibbs, that would satisfy the criterion, the second criterion about being associated with the lives of persons significant in our past, if you consider William Gibbs' contribution to the city of Yountville a significant one. If William Gibbs lived in this house, then it would qualify for historic significance. We don't know if he did live here. I'm a volunteer researcher at the Napa County Historical Society, and I rummaged around and found some information about Gibbs, but nothing about this house. Gibbs was living on land in, around Yountville in the 1860s. We know he had three sons, George, Sam, and Charles. And John Wickles, whose name is probably familiar to you as the unofficial historian of Yountville, is quoted in an interview as saying that Charles Gibbs lived in this house. There is also a deed that indicates George Gibbs sold the house. So obviously, there was the family connection. It is possible that it was the family home at, at that time, because this was long before the mansion was built. And nobody knows whether that's the case or not. Then if a property is, is this on now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. If a property is determined to have historic significance, then there are seven criteria for judging its integrity. Now, integrity is not the condition of the house, as we've already said. And those seven criteria are location, setting, design, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. And there are definitions of all of those. I won't go through those. Location, however, would mean that the house is in its original location. And there is strong evidence that it is not. The one that would probably have the most value for integrity in terms of this house is association, which is defined as the direct link between an important historic event or person and a historic property. So on the whole, I would say in terms of integrity, the house does not qualify as well, does not fare as well as it does on historic significance. So then, to reiterate our recommendations, which you've already heard, the house can be rehabilitated. You have not only Mr. Cuddy, but you also have a letter from Paul Kelly, who is also an architect who's done a lot of historic preservation and, and was associated with landmarks at one time. And both of them say it can be done. Would require a lot of work. But there is the advantage of preserving, when you talk about additional cost, you have to think about not only the cost of remodeling, but then the cost of what the new building would be as well. That has to be added in, into the mix. So whether this would be substantially more expensive to remodel and rehabilitate or tear down is a little difficult to say. And then you had letters from Wendy Ward and Paul Kelly, who pointed out that it is, of course, much more green to rehabilitate than to tear down and rebuild. The house could be moved to another site. If anyone wanted to do that, that is an expensive proposition. Just, this is sort of fanciful. My husband, who's a historian, suggested that since Gibbs sold the land, sold the land for the veterans home, it might be a suitable location to have this little house put to some use at the veterans home, but I realize that's a pretty far reach. If it is to be demolished, it should be documented, and those features worth preserving, preserving should be saved. Okay, so the main case for this house is its history, and that is yet to be proved. So our main recommendation is that the council request that the applicant hire an architectural historian from a list of qualified firms or individuals that do this work, and to research the house's history and possible connection to William Gibbs. Personally, I would like to see that done, even if you decide that the house should be demolished. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Steve Cuddy. I'm also with Napa County Landmarks and a local architect. I just want to add, Mary Ellen did a great job telling, giving you the, the lowdown on what we've, what we believe is to be true and what is significant or not significant about it. From an architectural standpoint, the house itself has had many additions to it over the years. And if it was to be deemed historical and the renovation was to move forward, it, it would be advantageous. It might be in everyone's best interest to actually take it back to its original form. That could be one solution. And another, the other thing is that while the structure has many challenges, it will be obviously of great benefit if it, if it, if it is deemed to be kept, to have some kind of historical status, because that makes it much easier to renovate. That's just a, from an architect's standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary Ellen really didn't mean to take this. I don't think she wants to take it home with her. Donna Heine, Gateway Mobile Home Park. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Gateway. Last month, I reported on the results of a one-on-one question regarding the farmhouse. I would like to update that information. We have 95 residents in the park, and our monthly meeting is on the 19th of this month. So we called, we have a telephone tree, and I personally made a lot of calls also to speak to residents if there had been a change in their opinion, sentiment, feelings, whatever the appropriate word is. We had 31 responses in favor of restoration and eight to be demolished. The weekend poll has changed this. We now have 32 in favor of demolishing, as opposed to eight in favor of demolishing last month. They base this because I asked why. And the main concern was, the consensus was, if the home is found to have historical merit, then the property should have a plaque, as suggested by Mr. Altomira and reported in the Yountville Sun. The, if, that is, if there is a designated historical significance of the property. The primary concern right now is, I think that most people, I want to be careful. I don't want to say my opinion because I'm speaking for the park. The primary concern of everyone in the park now is the safety and survival of the magnolia tree. And they would like to make certain that that, that there is sufficient protection of the tree, whether the home is remodeled or demolished and rebuilt. That's the Gateway Mobile Home Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. I'm Wendy Ward. I'm the Director of Preservation Napa Valley. I want to thank you all for allowing us the extra time to get a little bit more information and insight into this so that a good decision can be made. My comments are gonna be really brief. I want to thank Napa County Landmarks for weighing in, valuable opinion. And just very quickly suggest that when you have a owner of an old building, it's not just simply building a, an ownership of an old building, but we should look at it as stewardship of taking a building or a place forward, and how do you best do that? It's not simply a commodification of a building and how much it's, it's going to cost. So that absolutely has to be into the equation. But let's look at the idea of stewardship. And this is a perfect example of how do we take something that's 125 years old and bring it into the future? I'm still a little confused as to why the costs weren't considered when this was proposed and approved four years ago. Those, those numbers should have been sketched out, but now they, I guess, they, they're not sketching out. So that's, I'm just confused about that. And in response to the Title 24 issue saying it couldn't meet those standards, I, you know, the, the home has been torn down to its, its, its basics, and you're, you basically have a shell that you can absolutely bring up to Title 24 with green tech, with insulation, with storm windows, everything, and still keep the, the key character-defining issues of that house. Lastly, as I close here, I don't think anybody wants to stop, at least I certainly don't, I don't think Landmarks does. Nobody wants to stop the developer, George Altomira, from this project. It's a, it's a great development. He's got great workforce housing in there. It's just, how can we reexamine? How can we take this example of, of an old, of an old place? And they are finite. There are a few of them. And, and how can we best steward this and make it part of our economic engine without demolishing it? You know, how can we reuse this? It's called adaptive reuse. And you've got a good building that can get back into your economic engine, and he can still move on with his, with his project, whether it's, it's kept on the property or it's moved off and somebody else gets it back in the engine. So thank you again for taking some extra time and looking at this.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? This is it. Last chance. I'm gonna close public-
Hi, everybody. Mayor Sosserman. My name is David Shapiro, and I'm the operating part of the Yountville Inn, but I'm speaking as the, as a private citizen. So I was just listening. I wasn't planning on standing up and saying I have nothing prepared formally, but I wanted to say that. You know, Pat Abernathy is an expert in construction. I know that he has been looking at this project and knows exactly what this is gonna cost. And $200,000 is gonna more likely, in my experience, renovating old structures, which I have, we've been, we're very involved with that, likely turns into $300,000, $350,000, and $375,000. It's very expensive. And so I'd like to understand, I would like everyone to consider the fact that that's real money. And it's, I don't think that if this building is not truly an historic structure, we should not burden the developer with that kind of cost. And secondly, from everything that I've been hearing here, it seems as if the, the, the key defining issue is really whether Gibbs, Mr.- issue is really whether Gibbs, Mr. Gibbs, had any connection to this house. And I think from everything that I've looked at is, we know that his son sold it, but we also know that he was a real estate developer, that he sold property, and that he was very successful. So my take as a resident is that it's likely that this was a piece of property that was bought and sold, and he more than likely lived in the house that he lived on, on Washington Street. And so, given that, those facts, I would say that we should, probably, my request would be that you let the developer raise the building and build a great structure. And by the way, I did want to make another comment about the magnolia tree. I'm very clear of what everybody wants to do with that tree, and we want to preserve the tree. It's an amazing tree, and it's something that is in the benefit of everyone to have living and healthy. So, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments.
Tim Ringman, and since the tree was brought up, I would like to make a comment about the construction project there and the way that the trees were treated. I had to make a complaint to the town. The people working there stored construction materials right up against the tree. None of the trees on the property were protected, so I'm very skeptical that they really do want to preserve the tree, because I had to intervene and have the trees protected during the construction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Carol, think again, just again, as somebody who lives here, I, we are trying so desperately to save our old tree at Harper Creek. If there's a possibility of being able to save this home, it seems like it has some historical, you know, historical significance, and the Gibbs were involved with it. The Gibbs were certainly involved with the Veterans' Home. If it could be saved, I love the idea, if I understand right, that if the original proposal was that it would be used, it would be used for folks who are living in the affordable housing section. Is that correct? That it wouldn't be an empty house? It would be a house that would be fixed, if it could be salvaged, to be able to be used, and it certainly needs a plaque, it certainly, like the big old rock, there needs to be a way to explain to people. But we have so little that's old. The old, the more I'm learning about the old history of our town, from the Delinskis, from Rose and the family at Ponches, if the town's walls could talk, we were a body, amazing, fabulous place, and I would love whatever bits and pieces of old. The new buildings are wonderful, and they're adding tremendous, tremendous character and spice to what the town is, but all the old spice of the town. As you begin to learn about it, if we can save whatever we possibly can. And for me, that house is beautiful, and if it could talk, it would have stories. So if it could be salvaged, that would be my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty, seeing no further public comment, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion or action. How does council wish to proceed? Councilmember Mueller?
Well, one comment that really hasn't come up here tonight, that, you know, we're talking about William Gibbs, you know, whether this is, he was very involved in this farmhouse or not, seems to be a point that we need further clarification on. And that goes back, you know, now 150 years. But I spoke with Ella Gibbs, who I do see in our audience here, and she told me that actually, you know, the original city government thought about founding, it was the city of Yountville back then, but, you know, as we call it, the town of Yountville government, was conceived in that house by her and her husband and some associates. So that's like 50 years ago. I mean, it's something old and historic and really important, only if we can make an association if William Gibbs lived there or owned it. I mean, I was pretty sparked and jazzed by knowing that, you know, our government was founded there. I think that's pretty cool, even though 50 years is not a long time ago. It is DeLuis, he's younger than I am, so, you know, in the future, I think, you know, even that could really add to that. So I just really kind of wanted to add that piece of information that I think we should consider. It's not just our pioneers. And in terms of Gibbs, I mean, there's a lot of dead Gibbs in our pioneer cemetery. I took a walk out there, and there's two of the largest plots are the Gibbs family. So I think it's certainly important, with whatever we continue to discuss here and decide to find out some more information. But right now, I mean, I'm generally pretty impressed with the decision that the council made in '06 regarding the original proposal for the Yountville Inn and saving that farmhouse and putting the affordable housing in and things like that. I think it was a pretty sound decision. I can't see anything that I heard that would make that, would make me want to change that, you know, decision that was made in 2006. So I might have other comments, but those are my initial comments.
Councilmember Chilton?
A couple of comments, just to start. First of all, I do want to thank Napa County Landmarks. In my opinion, there are organizations that are out there in different parts of our community and across the country that are, I think are activists to the point of, they're ideological to no sense. Napa County Landmarks, I think, is not one of those, and I appreciate your comments. I think they were very balanced and very beneficial. So thanks to your organization, and I'm glad that the town is associated with it. I was on a trip in Singapore last week, and sadly, this entire topic came to mind. That city, which is a pretty unique place, back in the '60s and '70s essentially leveled old historic buildings by the square mile. And, you know, when you're there now, you feel a sense of loss, but at the same time, you also realize that those decisions created one of the most wealthy places in the world, and it took millions of people who lived in abject poverty and have taken them out of that. So these decisions are never straightforward and never easy. Fortunately, we're not talking about the poverty of millions, so I'm pleased with that. But I think the, these are not easy, easy issues to deal with. I have two frustrations with this, and it's kind of on both sides of it. I have a frustration on behalf of the property owner that on multiple occasions, this very jurisdiction has told them that they have a house that is not as significant. And in some cases, you could argue that that was made in a way that was beneficial towards the town when it comes to building the flood wall. So I would have a frustration on their behalf of not significant, not significant, and now, oh, wait a second, maybe significant. So I think that's, that's one view I have. The second view I have is frustration with that very property owner. If you're going to restore an old building, especially one that's been empty for years, a little bit of research and tearing some walls down and taking a look at it, back when this was done originally, could have been done, should have been done, and would have made this a lot easier. My belief is, is that we've had a lot of conjecture, there's facts that we don't know are facts. I think that a true historical report, I am not one who can make such a determination without more facts for sure. I think that should be done in this case, just to go back and take a look at some of the things that have been tossed around today, and just to be sure. Right now, I think that the facts aren't there, but they may be there. So I do support the staff recommendation, I believe it's a staff recommendation, or certainly Napa County Landmarks' recommendation for a true historical analysis of this. Secondly, as presented, I do support the request to remove two of the affordable housing units and place them in the second building. That does leave one affordable housing unit, I believe, we were talking about the different iterations, which has to be built either in the old farmhouse or the new farmhouse. But talking to the residents of Gateway, construction is of frustration, even if Donna doesn't want to say it out loud, and I think that holding up that process, which could hit us in the rain, which even we may have this week, I think that the council should move forward and go ahead and approve that request, move those two units, and let's start the process on the farmhouse as it is, and that could be a two-part approval process. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
My position parallels quite significantly with just a few minor adjustments to Councilmember And one of the comments that I was going to make, one of our representatives from Napa County Landmarks made already, which is, not all old buildings are historic buildings and have historic significance, historical significance. That's why it was critical to me and my decision, trying to clarify the two issues. Is the building itself historic, or is the association attached to that building historic? I don't think that building itself has been proven historic. Architectural style, some of the other criteria that were addressed by our Landmarks representatives, by most or all indications, it was not of major significance architecturally, representing a period of time, the location's been changed, the setting is not of significant value. But it's the association with the Gibbs family and the historic family of Yountville that I'm surprised is still in question. It seems to me that the applicant has known for a period of time now that the crux of this request was going to be based on, is this significant or not? And I think it fell short in its research by just trying to determine if the building itself was historic. As the staff report indicated, that was only one of the hurdles that needed to be overcome. So I'm not willing to grant the request for the change in the master development plan as it pertains to demolishing this building until we know that answer. And if we know that answer to be, it's still, you know, after an expert review, we have no evidence, because I know we had several different people claim they had facts, and they were contradictory, so not everybody's facts were clearly accurate. But I think the significance is still an issue, and until we have that issue resolved, I'm not willing to move forward on the demolition. If the issue is proven that there is no reportable definitive historic value associated with that house, then I can see demolishing it, having some representation of the perceived association with the Gibbs family, if that's appropriate. But until that, I still will not support demolishing the structure. My initial concern about the second part, at first I thought staff was asking us to table the issue about relocating the apartment units, but it sounds like you're asking for our opinion on that this evening.
Well, I actually don't think that you can make, take any action on, draw any conclusion for the applicant regarding that. You can direct staff to bring something back at the next meeting that will confirm that they're permitted to move those into the other affordable housing structure, if that's what you'd like staff to do.
Yeah, that was my understanding, that because of it not being a notice change, we couldn't act on that tonight. Now, I can support staff moving forward to present that request, but that decision is, was requested by the applicant tonight, can't be made tonight.
Right. I think that the separation of the issues between the farmhouse and whether or not you can relocate the two units, you can make that decision and direct staff to proceed accordingly.
And I can support separating the two issues.
Sure.
So just to clarify, in case it needs it, supporting, separating the two issues, not supporting the demolition of the house until we have an official historian review to determine definitively whether there is a direct association with the Gibbs family that then would make the historic value associated with that structure.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to have to agree with Councilmember Chilton and Vice Mayor Dunbar's assessment. I can't approve the demolition of the house. We wouldn't be here discussing this today if the applicant had seen their way clear to restore the house as originally approved in the original master development plan. So since there are questions that remain to be answered, I think it's imperative that the applicant take that position and answer those questions to the satisfaction of this council before we can either determine whether that house will be raised or restored. So with that, and as far as, as far as the other two units, I don't have any objections to their being moved, so, I mean, if it's sufficient, if staff has sufficient direction to bring that back to the next council meeting.
Nice. One question?
Yes.
Based on what you said, my question, and I don't, I don't know anything about these things, who performs these type of analysis? And I, my concern is, is one, is we direct the, you know, the developer to go out and get historical analysis, and people are going to say, oh, well, you know, they paid for somebody to give them what they wanted, and vice versa. I'm not sure if there, are there impartial established authorities that can deal with this?
We would be happy to recommend firms and individuals that do this kind of work, and it would be our recommendation that the planning department present--
Can you come up and say that on the record so we can record it?
We would be happy to recommend some firms and individuals that do this kind of work, and it would be our recommendation that the planning department present the applicant with a list of approved firms, and that he would find one of those who would do the work. Architectural Resources Group has done a great many historic projects in the Napa Valley of a high level of prestige. Page and Turnbull is another firm, and then there are also individuals that do this kind of work who, high quality and very objective and well-presented. So we could give you names.
Thank you.
Staff would prefer to keep even a little more distance to where staff administers this election through an RFP process, and the applicant would bear the cost of that.
Of course.
One of the firms mentioned Page and Turnbull, did the Maison Re evaluation, so we know, are familiar with some of these outfits.
And I would point out that the town has retained ARG, and they actually did part of the initial conceptual review for this facility as far as the potential adaptive reuse and remodeling for our seismic. Let me see if I can summarize what my understanding of the conversation where the council is at. I hear consensus that the council actually is providing a uniform consensus that there will be no change to the development agreement as it relates to raising the farmhouse absent the production of a historical inventory that completes the analysis that you're talking about by a licensed historical authoritarian. I hear consensus from all four of you on that. I believe I also hear consensus that you are willing to separate and allow staff to bring back the modification for the relocation of the two units on the next agenda, with the understanding that the other remaining elements in the approved development agreement have to be contained either in the retained farmhouse or the replacement farmhouse. I believe that's what I'm sensing.
Correct. I will concede to the other three votes, but my opinion is to make no change to the '06 agreement. Let it stand, would be my opinion.
And that's why I use the term consensus. But yes, I think that's the current direction step, but I will want to make sure that everybody understands that. If the applicant chooses not to pursue and pay for the costs related to the historical evaluation, then the terms and conditions of the existing development agreement stay in place, and they, in fact, are required to restore the structure. And at this point, since it's not registered as a historic structure, the restoration would not have to be at a technical historic level, I guess, for lack of, a lack of a better word I'm trying to. So I just want to make sure if that's everybody's understanding with the, kind of the next steps that we'll move forward with.
Let me ask, let me ask a clarification on the impact of the overall master development plan if, at the next meeting, the staff presentation is to, and the council approval is to move those two units out of the structure, is it staff's assumption there would not be a significant impact on open space, floor area, and the overall project, those types of elements that might cause other dominos to fall with that plan?
Well, I mean, we would write a paragraph that outlines that, because basically, the other thing that that modification would require is that all those other elements and existing terms-- and existing terms and conditions that were in the approved agreement would still need to be met, only they would need to be met in that structure. So the only thing you're doing is allowing it from going to a triplex with some associated things, is the farmhouse or replacement farmhouse must have at least one of the affordable workforce units and could have some of the ancillary structures, still meeting all of the FAR and parking. So you're not lessening the overall requirements, you're just allowing, if you would, a reallocation of the space within the other existing new buildings.
But not to belabor this point, but another part of the landmark presentation was that it should not be a false replication of history. Does that then trigger a whole new zoning and design review of the structure and design?
Staff's suggestion at this point is, don't get yourself ahead of yourself. In other words, we need to make the decision first as to whether you're going to require the applicant to maintain the home or allow it to be razed. And if you're going to allow it to be razed, then I think it is appropriate that the design and proposed plans that the applicant would want, and they may have a different option, they may come back with something that's in keeping, and certainly we would hope that they would keep that plan in spirit with the Napa Valley Landmarks recommendation that it not mimic something, or they may choose to bring back a different architecture. I would say we leave that open, because that's not, not really what you're discussing. If there's going to be something different, we're going to need to see what that something different is.
The reason I ask now is, to be fair to the applicant, if they choose to give up on the idea of demolition, they may continue to move forward as is tomorrow, but if they choose to continue to go down the path of potential demolition, then obviously things need to be put on hold. But it's kind of in their court to follow the existing conditions or not. That's why I want to make that clarification. There may be new hurdles that aren't out there right now that would be put up if they move forward to do a total remodel, or a total rebuild of that site.
At this point, I would agree with that assessment. If they choose to continue with the approved development, then they're obligated to restore it. If they want to continue to seek permission to tear it down and replace it, then that's something we'll need. And I know that they are working on, they have some tentative plans and outlines for what that would be, but I don't, at this point, you know, building and planning can take care of that, working with them if they want to spend some time and energy on that. But the first thing we've got to do is get the historical authorization issue clarified. And then, you know, at whatever risk they want to proceed, if they want to work on some design alternative options for the replacement farmhouse, certainly I would encourage them to, if that's their direction, so that they're prepared, if and when the results of the historical evaluation are noted. But if they want to have no issues and no time or anything, then obviously following the existing approved master development agreement is the simplest, easiest approach. I would agree with that.
Any more questions, clarifications? Staff has sufficient direction?
I will answer yes.
Good. Thank you. Let's take a five-minute break and reconvene at eight o'clock.
No, you don't.
Oh, great. Item 11, council member, or council member meeting reports and comments. Flood Control and Water Conservation District met, oh gosh, when did they meet? And there was really very little to update. I did not attend the meeting, I have the minutes. They basically agreed on some consent things and had updates on the flood control, Napa River and Napa Creek updates. Upper Valley Waste Management?
Yes, we had a meeting actually here yesterday, and couple items out of one, we, we did have the audit report for fiscal year ending this past June, and we got a, basically an excellent bill of health with everything up to snuff and what have you, so we're happy with that. We do, as California has cut back on a number of things that affect, fortunately, we do have some money left, and I think probably Kathleen, you're well, about $10,000 that we have been using for our town cleanup, so we're in good shape there. One of the other issues that was rather disturbing, but is Bob Pistone, the owner of Upper Valley Waste Management, was saying that the, you know, California, I'll tell you, when these guys start looking under rocks, they don't miss many of them. And now, the biggest thing is, if you're aware of, you know, when you buy a soda pop or bottles or anything, you pay a CRV charge, California recovery value, and that's basically to go back to help with the recycling. Well, now they have found it to their advantage to siphon money off of that. And so now, instead of breaking even, we're to the point where he's actually having to pay about $2,000 a month now for the, for the privilege of recycling our products. The sad thing about that is, it's going to come driving right back home when we do the recoveries for next year and determine out the rates and what have you, we're going to have a shortfall, and it's going to fall right back on the citizens of the towns. So these are the things that they're doing in Sacramento that are just sometimes unbelievable, but they happen, so just to be aware of that. I don't know, maybe you refuse to pay it or something. I did want to comment, just on one of the public comments, that Ms. Fink mentioned about the streetlights, she couldn't be more right. I think I have complained for years about that area. It is just terrible, and God forbid that we haven't had somebody get hit yet. I mean, I can't believe that we haven't, because it's just like going in a coal mine down there. And especially, as I find out too, you just don't have as good a sight at night driving as you used to have maybe 10, 20 years ago, so, God, I hope we can get something done on that, Steve. I mean, this, you know, to have to wait in line, just, I don't know, I just think that is something that we could be extremely liable if anything happened. I don't see where we'd have a leg to stand on, so, just my thoughts on that.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
NCTPA meets tomorrow.
That's correct.
What could be, I knock on wood, the shortest NCTPA meeting maybe in history.
I have anything to do with it.
We'll see. So we have a consent calendar, and that's it. So we'll see what somebody wants to bring up. I have a couple of other items. There's been a lot of talk in the community, I just wanted to highlight this yet again. As I'm sure a lot of people know, their, the budget problems all over the state are hitting the Napa Valley Unified School District. This is causing the district to consider closing certain schools, a long-term plan, which long-term could mean as early as the 2010, 11 school year, there could be the consideration of whether to close or consolidate Yountville Elementary. There's a forum at Redwood Middle School tomorrow night that starts at 6:30 PM and goes to eight, that talks about this program and facilities master plan. And there's, there's a lot of encouragement of people here in the community to please come to that meeting and, and at least be visible. There are other schools, like Carneros Middle School, who are elementary, who I'm sure will have a very large and loud contingent, because their school is actually on the chopping block right now. But I, I really encourage people, 6:30 tomorrow, Redwood Middle School. And, there it is. A couple other items, let's pile on at the point. The striping around the point, I know it's going to be fixed, but I've watched people have great confusion with the turn lane and the awkward handicap parking spaces since we've opened it up. If we could get Swank to take a look at that, it's, it's really, I know that that's part of the plan, but I think it's, it's out there right now, and it's great to have it open, but it seems to have created some confusion. One item to try to extend tomorrow's NCTPA meeting that I am going to bring up, I've gotten several comments regarding the new Yountville trolley. I've got no negative comments about the trolley, except for the fact that the trolley is not going into Ranch at Napa or particularly Gateway Mobile Home Park, because the trolley is so long and large, and the trolley operator has told a couple of people that he cannot back the trolley up, which I'm sure it's possible, but, so...
He does have reverse.
I'm sure he has reverse. But I can't imagine, that is a pretty big bus, that navigating back there would be difficult. So I just want to bring that up to the NCTPA, because there is a budget for replacing the trolley if it's needed. We prefer not to, why spend the money if it's not worthwhile? But if it's needed, and it may possibly be for that reason, I just want to bring that to the attention of the NCTPA, so that has been heard. One other item, kind of tangent on the district attorney being here, there was an effort by the county supervisors, specifically Supervisor Waggonconnect, to get the different jurisdictions to update their codes on the licensing of childcare centers. And state law pretty much trumps all local laws, and we, I believe we have some local ordinances in place that talk about how many children can be at a certain size center, which have been changed within the last year or two. So I'm going to try to get some more information on that, and then forward that to staff. To me, it's a consent item, it's very minor, but just some cleanup. We have a childcare facility here in town, Wine Country Day, Nixon Elementary School that operates in Yountville and in Napa, so for them to look at two different ordinances plus state law, that's what, that's what the county is trying to avoid, is just not to create confusion. Because ultimately, we could deny somebody a permit when state law requires that it be issued, so I just wanted to bring that item up.
Good. Good comments. Councilmember Mueller, any comments?
Yes, one, Sanders Smith and I attended the TAC meeting where they were looking at the Napa County AD 32 draft document, and just, there was a lot of discussion from around the room, but the overall consensus was that, well, I think the guy who brought it up wanted to declare a victory, but the overall consensus was that it really wasn't ready for prime time, and it was probably better that they, they felt they positioned it just as background educational information at this time, and they, everyone requested that they actually go back and find some more money and really get some better or additional consultants to really kind of rework it and bring in each one of the jurisdictions to have their specific input into that. So I think that might be coming, I don't know if that's on the NCTPA agenda or not for tomorrow, but that's what the, the review of that document was at the, at the TAC. And Mayor, I'm sure you'll want to say some more comments, but I just felt it was a great time at the chef's dinner at the veterans' home. There was a lot of very happy veterans who had a great time, but all the volunteers that I talked to, we were all sharing experiences about how much fun it was amongst ourselves to, to be there and enjoy what they were enjoying, so I think it was a great event. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just take off on that. It was, it's, it's always very well received and very well anticipated by the veterans, and the fifth annual Celebrity Chefs Veterans Day Luncheon was a delicious success, in my own words. We had several chefs from the community participate and prepare a fabulous three-course gourmet meal, and it was served to them by, I think upwards of 70 volunteers, and those volunteers were all coordinated by Jerry Lampy, the GM at Hurley's Restaurant and Bar, and actually the, the impetus for this whole event, and the person that's really motivated all of us to, to want to help out and to, to produce this event every year is Bob Hurley. It was, it's, 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 he's really the, the person behind it, and he's the one who motivates us all and all the other chefs, and he's instrumental in getting all the other chefs to participate, and his love and passion for the veterans and what they've done for us, and, and what they do for our community is, is really very, very special to him, and it is for the chamber, and I know the town of Yountville, and a bunch of us were there and as volunteers, serving and helping out. So that was a very, very special event, and we're looking forward to, to next year's event. With that, I would just like to say, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I know we're having a Thanksgiving dinner at our new community hall on
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving Day, which is November 26th, so next Thursday. I hope you all have your reservations there, I don't have that number handy, but it's in the sun, and we all know who's taking those reservations. That would be Barbara Delinsky, so hopefully you have your reservations. And Donna?
2502.
Huh?
2502.
2502, 944-2502. And Donna, Donna is also taking reservations, and if you have time to volunteer, just to serve maybe one meal, that would really be great, if you could do that. And then if you want to work that turkey dinner off the next day and maybe hoof it around town a bit and partake in some of our activities, the Festival of Lights, our 21st Annual Festival of Lights will be on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, and there'll be a lot of activities for the kids, and we will be featuring some events at the, the new community center, and, well, of course, there'll be great food and wine, but nobody will be interested in that, because you will have had your amazing Thanksgiving dinner, right? But no, we'll have, most of our restaurants, all of our restaurants will be participating, and our Yountville Appalachian Wineries, and, and again, there'll be a lot of activities for the kids, and of course, Santa will be here. He'll be here posing for photographs with the kids. Vice Mayor?
I do have a couple, just to add one more comment to the Veterans Day Luncheon, which really was treated as it's been every year, and it's amazing how many chefs we get from, even outside of town this year, we had Go Fish was represented. Rick Enos came up from Compadre's Real Grill. Rick is still very much part of our community, even though he's extended the family a few miles, but, so just, just some great turnout from the chefs and all the support staff, because those, you know, the staff from Hurley's and other restaurants, they don't get the day off. They then go to work that night, most of them, so it's really a very big commitment for, for everybody involved. Two other events I just wanted to touch base on. One, of course, on November 24th, the long-awaited and much-anticipated ribbon cutting for our community center. And it's just, hopefully people have been able to get by and check out the exterior. Councilmember Chilton and I have been seeing the interior on a weekly basis for a few months now, and it's really going to be a spectacular property. So that's very exciting for us to be able to present that officially at 3:30 on the 24th as a ribbon cutting. Then I also wanted to mention that I've attended the last couple of Yountville Arts Subcommittee meetings, and it's also very impressive how quickly the arts community has rallied together and is moving forward on a variety of, of projects, one of which is art that's going to be displayed in the community hall, in the community center building itself. And we're going to, on December 11th, as part of the Christmas tree lighting and kind of formal public opening of the community center site, that art will be on display and ready to go for the public to see. So that's kind of an all-inclusive showcase of what type of program we can have in this community center. It's really going to be, I think, a spectacular addition to Yountville, and, and it's really also very encouraging to see the local artists and all the excitement they bring to these meetings. A variety of artists, some professionals, some, what are we calling the, they're not amateurs, they're emerging artists of varying levels of emergence, I guess, but that's something that we'll be able to watch for, hopefully for years to come, develop here in town.
Sorry, I wanted to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Dutton made, I believe the la, well, it wasn't the last council meeting, I wasn't here. Hopefully we didn't do this last time. He brought up the issue of the winery definition ordinance and weddings. We didn't talk about that at the last council meeting, did we? I think that that needs to be brought up at the December 1st meeting, as we will, that's going to hit heavy in, in January, I think.
We have it on our agenda, but it won't be on your December 1st agenda. It'll be a January item for discussion.
We'll pop that in the toolbag.
I don't like that toolbag. We lose the bag. Okay.
We do have that on our list, based on that feedback. And we have had some preliminary meetings and discussions, and we will have an opportunity for the council to weigh in and provide some comments, and we have had some brief meetings with and provide some comments, and we have had some brief meetings with county staff and others to let them know that the town does have some concerns.
Okay, and I assume you feel confident that the Board of Supervisors isn't taking that up the first week of January, I assume it's this winter, but...
My understanding is it's not going that quickly, but I'll double-check that.
Okay, well, we can help slow it down possibly.
Any more council comments? Future agenda items, Vineyard Oaks, that's the Knight Property Development Agreement, Pacific Blues Cafe Design Review, Capital Improvement Program update, and Parks and Recreation Department Program update. Item 13, closed session. Thank you, everyone. We'll reconvene right after closed session.